I'm going to ask Councilman Sam Bishop. Will he be able to turn the page?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one public hearing tonight, a additional use permit request by Billy Massey, agent for Starlight Mobile Home Park LLC, for the expansion of an existing mobile home park with one single wide mobile home and one single family residence on Starlight Drive, Act's parcel 529-A-41 in the B3 General Business District. Is there anyone here tonight to address this matter?
I'd like to speak on behalf of Mr. Bobby Christian, please.
You'll come forward, identify yourself, and address your appointments to the church.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Bobby Christian asked me would I speak on behalf of him because it wasn't possible for him to make it today, and he just want me to let you know that he would appreciate that this park wasn't put in the vicinity of his area due to the fact that his property would profit depreciate, and basically, that's it. Okay? And we thank you for everything that y'all do.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else to address this issue? I believe this has been to the Planning Commission. This is the public hearing, we'll vote on it next meeting, is that correct? Very good. If there's no one else to address this issue, then I will close the public hearing, we'll call a regular meeting to order. We have the...
Mayor, can I add something to this?
Yes, you certainly can.
Is now the appropriate time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to request to amend the agenda for this evening to include a street committee recommendation on the relocation slash vacation of lot lines to create Lot 3A and Lot 4A of White Plains subdivision, creating two lots located on Green Drive, North East.
That's in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'll make that.
A motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We will add this as number six, under discussion with mayor and council members. And I think that also, under the citizens' hearings, we have someone here to speak tonight about the community center. David Bowman, okay. I will get to you post haste, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, we have the council minutes, meetings for the minutes of April 28, 2015. I hope you've had a chance to review the required lengthening this time.
Move that we approve the minutes?
Motion in the second that we approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Schellalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hooch.
Aye.
I believe that's six oh. We have a citizen's resolution tonight, and...
It's not often that you get to do these things that are, you're so glad to see happen, and so important to let the citizens of our town know about the accomplishments of our fellow citizens. So, I think we had to lie to you to get you here, Bob, but I'm going to ask Mr. Robert Luther Dobson if he will join me at the podium.
Bob?
I have a... That's my phone, did you have that pocket? No. We have a resolution honoring the contributions of Robert Luther Dobson, whereas Robert Luther Dobson has provided leadership, dedication, and service to the New River Valley community without regard to personal recognition, and whereas Mr. Dobson has served as an outstanding educator for over forty years with Montgomery County Public Schools, first as a teacher at the Christiansburg Industrial Institute, then later as a teacher and coach at Christiansburg High School, and finally as school administrator at Christiansburg Middle School, and whereas his counsel, example, and wisdom have inspired students to become active and productive citizens, and whereas Mr. Dobson has served as a member of numerous boards and organizations, including the Town of Christiansburg Planning Commission, Roselle Peters Park, Montgomery County Selective Service Board, Montgomery County Department of Social Service, American Red Cross Board, Montgomery County Emergency Assistance Program, National Association of the Advancement of Colored People, Scout Master for the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas Mr. Dobson has also served as a member of St. John Masonic Lodge Number 35 and Aladdin Temple Number 111, and has served on the Deacon Board at Shaker Memorial Baptist Church since 1973, whereas Mr. Dobson has been recognized for his contributions with the Montgomery County Kiwanis Club Award, Montgomery County School Administrator of the Year Award, the NAACP Community Service Award, and Lame of the Year, among others. Now therefore be resolved that Christiansburg Town Council, meeting in a regular session April 28, 2015, adopts this resolution in recognition and appreciation to Robert Dobson for his years of service and leadership to his community, and wishes for him continued happiness in his retirement.
My father and I go back quite a ways. We have shared a lot of good minutes and moments together. I can't express the camaraderie that we have had down through the year. I don't like him lying to me. Because of my fondness for him, I will forgive him. And in closing, I find words hard to express my gratitude at this time, so I'm going to just say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you."
Bob, would you take one more minute and introduce us to your family that's here? You've got folks.
Yes, I have with me my wife, Charlene, would you stand, please? And my daughter, Dimitri, stand. Also, my son, or two sons, Isaac, and that's my oldest son in the wheelchair, Robbie. Okay, Isaac also has his wife and son with him. Would you all please stand? Thank you so much.
I don't know, David, tell me what you want.
David tells me what he wants.
Very good. Bob, again, thank you so much, and thank you all for coming to honor my good friend Bob Dobson.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
We'll take a, just a very, very brief recess. I know somebody have other meetings, places you need to go to, so it will take just a second if you need to, if you need to leave.
Been a long time.
Under our citizens' comments, we have Mr. David Moore that would like to speak to us on behalf of the community, Christiansburg Community Center. David, thank you, sir. Come on.
Thank you for having me tonight, I appreciate it. My name, like I said, is David Moore, resident of 740 Glen Court, entering Christiansburg, member of the Christiansburg Community Center and Shaker Memorial Baptist Church. I won't identify myself, I believe I've spent another day more than in these council chambers, and y'all have been getting confused who we were. But just want to know, we're not twins, that's the difference. And I'm here tonight to talk about the Christiansburg Community Center. We are in desperate need of repair, and we hope you all could help us out. I don't have a lengthy presentation, I want to just go ahead and get right to the point. So a little background, the Christiansburg Community Center is a 125-year-old Christiansburg landmark. The formerly known as the Old Heel School. Some people say it is, well, it is, was, the first CI. That's where CI started up on this old hill. So tonight, we're going to talk about the need for roof, windows, and even some soffit work. So as you can see, we have so much work needs to be done. Someone that a long time ago tried to put vinyl in here, and it got thrown out. It's a direct, this is right now, is a bit buried, ain't working. So we may have to get an environmental impact study before we can repair it. Also, our roofs are very needed to repair, and our windows. This is again, is roof. You see the patchwork here, you see the ice break here, you see various repairs have been done, and we got pinhole leaks all in this roof. So our first priority is to get this roof fixed. This is a close look at our roof. Right here, you see our very, our repair, that's a drywall, the standing seam is done. You see rust spots, rust spots all over the place. You see paint filling in. So we got spots like this all over the roof. It can no longer be repaired. You see multiple repairs here, somebody tried to put in a new piece of standing seam. It is blowing up. Got your ice shield here, pretty soon this is just going to peel back, and you have to close this roof. This is on the backside, someone tried to put a patchwork on top at the peak, and just rushing through, and we got various rust spots here also. This is down by the ice shield. You can see the repair here, rust spots here, again at the ice shield, we got all kinds of problems, and here we got various patches, and repair is trying to be made. These are our windows at the community center. These are the original windows to the building, 125 years old. They need a lot of work. The seals are leaking, we got painting broke, and they're very inefficient. They say they'll paint windows, so we're just going to do them all sample. This is a window at the front of our building, we got to have a two-by-four just to hold it up. These are some more ones. Seal's actually missing on this one. This one, we're just trying to keep the building falling in on it. These have various paint, and we got the seal on this one coming back. So if you're a glacier, we need you right now. Future needs. I continue with the, and the windows done, it'd be nice to have a zonal heating system. We got a central heating system right now, a whole burner. When we heat the building, we heat the whole, even if somebody wants to heat for one roof, that gets expensive. There's no air conditioning in the building, which wasn't a problem thirty years ago, but now that everybody's got air conditioning, everybody's used to it, so when they go out, they expect it. We need to remodel the bathrooms, remodel the kitchen, and remodel the immediate rooms. So all of these are things that the Christiansburg Community Center needs, and we need your help. One thing you won't see up here is, how much money do I want? I can use a million dollars to get it off this. I can use a hundred thousand dollars and spend it in one to two years either way. Give me fifty thousand dollars, and I can get the roof and windows done. Give me twenty-five thousand dollars, and I can get the roof. Also, in there in the back, if you have our mission statement, you have a overview of the project of the roof, there is an estimate on the roof, about thirty-two thousand dollars. We try to repair people of those windows, I would say the least, it costs a thousand dollars a window, to give up to, and some of them don't paint windows. So we talk them fifty, sixty thousand dollars just for the roof and windows. So any five-figure numbers can give us great.
Do you have some funding that you've raised throughout?
We raise funding primarily through, we have a gospel fest every year of the Shaker, we raise about twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred dollars there. We send out grant requests to various companies, and they give us five hundred dollars a year, five hundred dollars there. Those funds basically pay the operating expenses. We got to buy oil. Shaker helps us out with the lights and water. So basically, pay the operating expenses. But we have nothing for capital improvements.
What is the, what is the incentive you use for it now?
The NAACP meets there, the board meets there. We used to have a tutorial program where we paid it directly, but we want to redirect those funds to get the capital improvement done, or the building's going to fall in on them. So we suspended that program until we can get the building in shape. But as soon as we get the building back in shape, we're going to have a tutorial program come back.
I think, in talking with Ms. Hairston recently, I think a lot of Dr. Shaker's records are, you want to store them there, or secure them in a spot?
Most definitely. We want to use it as a museum. There are many, many records that people have here all the way, that the young people have never seen. And it'd be great if you could display those, and have the young people go through and see the history of Christiansburg.
Mr. Moore, the last couple of times I was there was for fish fries, and also recently after, after the funeral that was there, the hosting reception down there, but forgive me for not knowing, but community access and utility of that, of that building would be very important, I think, whether it's for me and probably other council members. So if there's any community group that wanted to coordinate the use of that building, that, I mean, that would be...
It's open to the community. All they have to do is call one of us, we have it open for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm the coordinator right now, my phone number's right inside, so anybody that wants to use it, they just call me, and we can schedule the use for it.
So it would have some benefit to the community as a whole?
Oh, most definitely. Most definitely.
For public use.
That's in our mission statement, we want it to be used by the community.
Thank you.
It's been underutilized, sort of.
And it's probably because of the condition, it's not used.
Yes, sir. In winter time, it gets cold, and in summer time, it gets hot. And the rain gets wet.
Okay, any further questions, Sam?
Structure-wise, what shape is the building in itself?
Structurally, it's very good shape. It was made, like the church walls, are about twelve inches thick, so structurally, it's very good.
Okay. Very good. Any further questions? David, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We plan on discussing this at some point, and I've got a couple of ideas to share with you down in Branson.
All right, and more information you need, just let me know.
All right, thank you, David. Okay. Under discussions with mayor and council members, we have citizens. Do any of, I'm sorry, any of the citizens to address council? During none, I'll close the citizens' hearing portion. We're now under discussion by mayor and council members. We have a couple of appointments to some boards that we need to take care of tonight. The first is Alan Fabian, who is Chief Executive Officer of Lewis Gale Hospital, confirmation of appointment to the 9/11 authority. Is this a new appointment?
It's a replacement for Mr. Bowman, he's not got, he wants to retire.
Okay. Again, again. So I have served on a couple of boards with Alan, and certainly could recommend his appointment.
I'll make a motion that we approve Mr. Fabian's confirmation and appointment to the 9/11 authority.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, any further discussion?
Thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Fabian.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Schellalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hooch?
Aye.
So you got it.
Aye.
Six oh. Our next appointment is Spencer Hall's reappointment to the Cemetery Advisory Committee, and I think you have a document there in front of you, or maybe I have, that shows that Mr. Hall's attendance has been stellar at these committee meetings, and Mr. Hubbard, do I entertain that motion from you to report in the talk?
I do, and he is in the...
He is in attendance, Spencer.
I think he has a few words to say.
I do, I?
Better you than Hubbard, I'll tell you that right now. Better you than Hubbard.
Yeah, I was right. I appreciate the, the opportunity to serve under the committee, where our committee's been in service for two years. In that two years, we've done a complete master plan for the cemetery, and been presented here at the council. We have a number of initiatives going on. One is we're opening up a new section for graves. Another initiative is to start putting in combberiums, niches at their call, you know, for ashes. Cremation is becoming a big thing, it's, and, you know, most of the cemeteries are going through niches. The other thing we're going to do is try to get the records online. Now, one of the very difficult efforts we have to do is there's, you get these records online. It's my understanding that the records do exist, and it's just a process of trying to get them on. It'd be wonderful to go in there and see, you know, search by name, or search by, by date, or search by birthday, you know? And many, many cemeteries have that, and we're looking towards that as well. So those are probably our three next big things that we want to do, and I, again, appreciate the support of the council. And we have four people on the cemetery committee. We had five, and one decided they did not want to serve anymore. We're, of course, unpaid, but we're happy to do it.
Thank you, Spencer. So I have a motion and a second?
I guess I made the motion.
You did, you did, Steve.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any further discussion?
Of course, you know, the cemetery committee went the last election down.
Yeah. That's a cemetery joke, yeah. Everybody down, get in there.
That's exactly right. All right, so I have a motion and a second, no further discussion. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Schellalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hooch?
Aye.
It would be six oh. Gentlemen, thank you, Spencer.
Thank you very much.
Alan, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
You'll just shove me back in the corner somewhere, all right? Okay. All right. Next on our discussion is the Christiansburg Aquatic Center free passes and exercise classes for full-time town employees and volunteers of the fire department and rescue squad. I believe we had a work session...
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, and we modified this. Mr. Helms, do you have anything to add to that?
Each of you have a copy of the proposed policy. Highlights are each full-time employee and active fire and rescue volunteers serving Town of Christiansburg, they provide individual membership to the Christiansburg Aquatic Center, and they can pay the difference if they want to have their family join, and also that each employee have up to two free passes, or two free classes at the aquatic center and/or the recreation center, help with the wellness program, get their families involved with activities.
You need formal action by council for this?
We need to.
I make a motion that we adopt the policy as presented to us. I'll second.
Motion in the second, any discussion?
Only thing I have to add, Mr. Mayor, is the, we had talked about the volunteer status, and I'm very, very happy to see that in here, because we have so many volunteers in the town through the rescue squad, through the fire department, that give of their time, and not, and are not compensated whatsoever, so I'm glad that in addition to the full-time employees that we have on, that are recognized here, that also those volunteers are recognized, and that's my full support.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Tom.
It has my support also, and I will note that in the write-up, it does say we'll review the policy in one year, which is great.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Schellalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hooch?
Aye.
I believe that to be six oh. Thank you, ma'am. Water and sewer fee increases from fiscal year 2015 to 2016 to be effective June 1, 2015, in accordance with code of Virginia, 15.2-2119 and 15.2-928, as proposed during the public hearing of April 28, 2015. I believe those are all set forward in the budget, the budget item.
We discussed them at work session for the budget, had public hearing last meeting, and this is to...
I don't think anyone spoke against that.
I'll move that we adopt, I'll move that we adopt those rate increases we discussed at the work session and had public hearing.
A motion and a second, any discussion? I think Mr. Helms told me this morning, the reason that he would like to have this effective on June 1 is if we waited till July 1, that it would be billed in the, in the August statement?
Well, be, actually, October statement.
October statement, so this just gets started on it.
This allows it to be billed the 1st of July.
Yeah, we read meters the 1st of June, and bill in August, so...
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Schellalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
It would be six oh. Gentlemen, thank you, Spencer.
Thank you very much.
Alan, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
You'll just shove me back in the corner somewhere, all right? Okay. All right. Next on our discussion is the Christiansburg Aquatic Center free passes and exercise classes for full-time town employees and volunteers of the fire department and rescue squad. I believe we had a work session...
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, and we modified this. Mr. Helms, do you have anything to add to that?
Each of you have a copy of the proposed policy. Highlights are each full-time employee and active fire and rescue volunteers, serving Town of Christiansburg, they provide individual membership to the Christiansburg Aquatic Center, and they can pay the difference if they want to have their family join, and also that each employee have up to two free passes, or two free classes at the aquatic center and/or the recreation center, help with the wellness program, get their families involved with activities.
You need formal action by council for this?
We need to.
I make a motion that we adopt the policy as presented to us. I'll second.
Motion in the second, any discussion?
Only thing I have to add, Mr. Mayor, is the, we had talked about the volunteer status, and I'm very, very happy to see that in here, because we have so many volunteers in the town through the rescue squad, through the fire department, that give of their time, and not, and are not compensated whatsoever, so I'm glad that in addition to the full-time employees that we have on, that are recognized here, that also those volunteers are recognized, and that's my full support.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Tom.
It has my support also, and I will note that in the write-up, it does say we'll review the policy in one year, which is great.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
I believe that to be six oh. Thank you, ma'am. Water and sewer fee increases from fiscal year 2015 to 2016 to be effective June 1, 2015, in accordance with code of Virginia, 15.2-2119 and 15.2-928, as proposed during the public hearing of April 28, 2015. I believe those are all set forward in the budget, the budget item.
We discussed them at work session for the budget, had public hearing last meeting, and this is to...
I don't think anyone spoke against that.
I'll move that we adopt, I'll move that we adopt those rate increases we discussed
Basically, we put a soundset parking permit.
Did we offer only the 10, Mr. Helms, when we went back to the table? She offered 12, did we count it with 3,500, 4,500?
I talked to her about, started with the 35, and then...
Did she come back with the 10?
No.
What did she come back with when we counted with 35?
I went back with 10.
Oh, you went back to 10?
After, started with 35 and looked at adjoining properties, the values, and...
The adjoining properties are developed?
Some, part of them, there's two right next to it that are not developed.
So when you offered 35, and she offered 15, and then when you offered 45, she offered 20.
She had 12, and then we offered 35.
She asked 12.
And then when she said no, flat no, you said, well, what about 10, is that right?
It was after researching the property values.
Right, after researching the property.
And that's got, that piece of property has interest for future needs to...
Right, Huckleberry Trail, I think that's, even when we mentioned that...
Amongst other things.
And the parking for the aquatic, and that is needed.
It's very needed.
I mean, that's desperately needed.
Well, Mr. Helms, is there any indication that the property could be, I mean, hey, we're on camera now, so is there any indication that the property could have been, I guess, purchased for less than the 10,000? I guess we won't know at this point.
She didn't act like it when I, it took her a week and a half to come back and agree on the 10,000.
Do you feel like the 10 is a reasonable value for what we're planning to use the property for?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
We wouldn't want to say to her that council had recommended seven, and see what she said.
I told her, I started with 35.
Aye, but if you talk, it might go up, okay?
Do we have any?
If this gets turned down, I want Councilman Hall and Steve to do the...
Exactly right.
It'll come back 20, then.
I'd like to add that if, you know, all the deed, title search and everything is okay for reverse, if not...
Not encircuses at all, if you're aware.
Well, I mean, that should be part of the motion.
That'll be part of the...
Double check all that.
And I, it was, I just didn't hear it initially. Okay, so any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
That would be six oh.
Yes, sir.
And that is pursuant to those checks coming back, where we don't, we're not in number values, love.
Exactly. Street Committee, Mr. Stipes and Mr. Van Hoosier, we have a lot adjustment point behind Street, Car Drive.
This is a parcel out off of Runup Road, off of Dunlop. And it's a very, it's a very simple subdivision. There are presently three lots that are being carved into two lots to be called Lots 4A and Lots 3A. You can see the internal lot lines being vacated with the dash lines in the middle. And basically, this is tidying up the property, and there's also public utilities being dedicated to the town as required by our ordinance. And the street committee's reviewed this and recommends approval of the plat as presented, and I make the recommendation in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
That would be six oh, thank you. Council reports, Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything to put.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
I just want to appreciate the community support we had at the informational setting at the recreation center last Monday. And I appreciate the, I think, presentation we received tonight and all the comments. I guess totally, everything up, we're close to 1,000 comments of our citizens now, as to what they either desire, need, or expect, or find necessary on the property. And just being very, very excited about the way we can interconnect the town in that regard. Nothing else to report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. B?
Nothing.
Mr. Stipes?
One brief statement, although she's left the audience, it was very nice to see. Hopefully, she might see this on video, or someone sees it, but I really appreciated seeing Nanny B. Hairston here this evening, a first lady of our town and history sitting amongst us. So that said, it was really nice to see her. I hope everyone could recognize that she was in the audience this evening.
Mr. Showalter?
I just would like to say on behalf of the Central Business District Committee, which Mr. Bishop and I serve, and Mike, if you want to admit something later, I apologize for maybe stealing some thunder, but just to thank the Farmers Market Committee for the inaugural Farmers Market, that was Thursday. I wasn't able to attend, but my wife did, and a lot of my coworkers did, neighbors, and they really had a lot of positive things to say about it. And our mayor serves on that, and he spearheaded this committee, so I appreciate that. I would like one request, and it's something you and I talk about, is that if you could go to them now that we've got the Farmers Market open, and see if we can get the Central Business District Committee, if they'd be willing to move their priority into which the Farmers Market could still fall underneath that committee, but if they'd be willing to be on an actual committee instead of just two council people. What do you think?
I think so, I think that's quite possible. I kind of, I wanted to see how this thing played out, and it's been very good. I would encourage any of you on council that would have any ideas of representatives you would like to see to at least email to me, so I'll have a working list. Would be residents, property owners, businesses downtown, and probably possibly even to include Cambridge. So if you have any ideas within the next couple of weeks, I'd like to see those, and we'll proceed from there. Mr. Hubbard?
You know, I think I have an important announcement that was in the papers this morning, and I think that it's really good for the town of Christiansburg, and I hope that we'll do something official about Hubble. Hubble announced today that they are going to have, I believe it's a $6 million addition to their plant, and they're going to hire another additional 100 employees. And I think I can speak to the whole council here that we are just very pleased with their decision, and hopefully, maybe we can send them some kind of communications that we really appreciate what's going on, and we support them the whole way.
And Mayor, that's something I want to ask Mr. Helms about, is that that is now official, obviously, it's in the paper, but it's official, because Mr. Hubbard mentioned, I think as a council, that's something that we came together on, in addition to working with the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, and excellent, I guess, representation of regional support and community support in and of itself. So it's, I saw, and I think my, probably my exclamation was somewhat juvenile, but I don't know what I said, but it was just amazing to see that in the paper and knowing that investment is here, because I didn't think we were going to get it. At one point, I felt very, I was worried about that.
According to article in the paper, they already hired 20 of the 100.
I think they're probably going to be bringing some people in from the other locations that they're going to close down.
That's right.
Two weeks ago, I played golf with the plant manager, and...
You're going to claim responsibility for this, President?
No.
The ground did it.
No, no, I claim that responsibility, but I want to say that it was a very tightly guarded secret up until the very end. I had no clue. In fact, my conversation with him was very abbreviated and very private, and he gave me no indication. And he did indicate to me that a decision had been made, and when that was in the conversation, I politely begged off of it and changed the subject, but I was like, man, we didn't get it.
That's one of the, I remember we all talked about that before, that's one of the larger employers, and it's a certain type of job, and just knowing that that was going to go in one of three places, I just, I'm excited.
I'm elated.
Yes, I am too.
Mr. Hubbard, anything else?
That's fine, thank you.
I would again like to echo Councilman Hall's, thanks to the Farmers Market Committee, Randy, you were, and Billy Aldrich were extremely valuable during this process. I think we have, well, it can't be my wife, she's...
We won't tell her, okay?
Sorry. I apologize, I've meant to turn that thing off three times tonight. And they were all very instrumental. We have hired, the committee hired Sarah Belcher to...
Is that Miss Belcher right now?
No. It's a legal issue, I have to deal with that. Not mine, but a friend's. But I think they were all very instrumental in hiring Sarah, who has, we've gotten rave reviews on her performance, and we're extremely pleased. The market did open, I think we're going to have to soon address an issue of acquiring insurance. I know our attorney has said, yes, we have to. I know that our insurance agents have said we need to, but I think we're stifling that market if we don't try to work something out. Now, maybe an LLC, we can move on quickly, but I mean, I think it's, I know we had eight more vendors willing to come, and the insurance thing came up, and it really did make a little bit of a problem in getting them here. It was a good turnout, I estimated somewhere around 300 people were through there that afternoon. I will remind everyone that it opens up again this coming Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00, and every Thursday until October. And again, I'm pleased that the citizens' comments and support have been fabulous on it, so I appreciate all those that worked so hard toward it. The other thing I wanted to bring before council, and I wanted to address it in public, if we have an opportunity, I've been approached about the possibilities of renaming, or at least honoring, one of our fallen police officers by renaming the historic book park or dedicating it in his name, to him by the name of Scott Hilton. I've had some people that have asked if we would consider, and, you know, I wanted to bring this to you all, to get your thoughts on it. It's an ideal situation, it's an ideal place. Scott was not only a police officer, or most recent, I hope, our last police officer that lost his life in the line of duty, but he was also in the Virginia National Guard. So the positioning of this thing and some type of honorary entheum, I'd ask that you all consider allowing us to go forward with this. Any...
You're looking for a motion?
No, I don't, I mean, I think as long as you all realize, I mean, I brought it to you, and I feel like you all are ready to, are involved in this, or approve of this, then I'll start on it. I'll keep you posted as we go on. Hit me on I have, thank you.
We may be remiss to not recognize that the former mayor and his wife were here also for Mr. Donfins.
He didn't want any recognition at all tonight, he said, don't mention it.
But he's not here now.
Do you have a guest with you, or an employee with you we need to meet?
Sure, this is Taffa the Prophet, she's an intern downstairs in the planning and zoning department, so you might see her face around a little bit more when we're introducing her to council this evening and how the process works.
Because you're a tech student, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
She told me what she was majoring in, something pretty fabulous.
Environmental policy and planning.
Very good. Nice to have you with us this summer. With that, Mr. Helms, I'll turn it over to you.
I wanted to use permit to set, public hearing set, for a major home occupation to allow firearms sales at 185 South Central Drive, that's in the Belmont Farms subdivision. I'd like to set that for the 23rd of June.
So moved. Second.
I was in favor.
Aye.
Said it.
Did you say that was in Belmont Farms?
Yes. We have several people sell firearms out of their homes, two or three, in town. Basically, people call, and they get them and deliver them. Annual police memorial ceremony will be Monday, the 18th of May, at 5:00 p.m. down to County Building on Runup Street. Planning District Commission meeting is tomorrow evening.
Can we get that date one more time, Mr. Helms?
18th of May.
Thank you.
5:00 o'clock, I believe it is.
5:00, yes. Budget work session Thursday night, this Thursday night, 6:00 p.m. I'd like to have a street committee meeting on the 26th of May to talk about construction standards, as a council meeting, maybe at 6:00, 6:30.
Either one suits me.
Six, six, aye?
Six is fine.
Last thing is, another, been approached by someone else wanting to sell some land.
God, maybe we better negotiate it. Barry didn't do this.
That suits me fine.
He gave me his price already. This is, this piece of land right here, this is the Waffle House, that's Food Line, North Franklin Street. Our property, we own from here all the way around to Cambridge Street. There's two parcels on Cambridge Street we don't own, and we own from there all the way to Pepper's Ferry Road. Mr. Woody owns this now, he's been approached, somebody wants to buy it for a commercial, and he wanted to give us an option. He pays taxes here also, and he knows if built, if it's developed, it will cost much more in the future if we build a road through there, so he wanted to give us first option. He's offering it to us for what he has in it, which is $445,000. It's peace, it's on the market for 660.
I wouldn't say, I'm not interested.
Well, I think that's the, that is the final point for Patrick's Way.
Yep.
That's the only, that's the one...
That's right across from Trinity Baptist Church, with the line there.
This is Trinity Baptist Church, I believe.
I mean, you're basically going to purchase a $450,000 worth of property just to have the road go straight across, is the way I see it.
Well, that's the only place to put it.
Right, unless it...
Of course, now, if we don't purchase it, and the road does go through, the state will buy it, and we'll have to pay a percentage?
Either the state will buy it, or we'll buy it, and you buy the land, you buy the business, and you buy future profits for so many years, the way I understand it. Is that correct, Mr. Stipes?
I'd say in the old days, that's, that business model is true, but no longer is that true. We don't get the allocations from BDOT for our public improvements as we used to. In fact, probably six, seven, maybe even eight years ago, the town ceased getting revenues for, from the state anyway. We still get a little pass-through from the federal government, but we don't have, the six-year program doesn't mean a whole lot to localities like us anymore. So this will be more our project than it will be the state's, they would have significant money in the project. And I'm not making an argument to buy the property, because I have reservations as well, but we would, if, when that road does come through, that property will be expensive. And whose money, you know, whose skin is in the game, it's hard to say just what it's going to be, but it's not going to be the 98%, 2% model that we've seen in the past. 98% state money and 2% local money like 114 was.
Revenue sharing is 50/50.
Yeah, so you can make the case either way. I share the reservations that Mr. Hall has, but...
What's the timeframe we're looking at for that road, if it comes, comes through down, down through and meanders its way to go straight through, straight through right there from between the, between the Food Line Shop Plaza and the...
The bank, right?
And the bank there, the number one credit union.
Whenever we say it is.
We're looking, maybe really looking at probably, what, four to six years, five to seven?
It's a much-needed improvement, I mean...
Eventually, right.
Right away, the beauty of this is, we do have, probably, if you did a percentage basis, we have over 90% of the right-of-way control now.
Except for...
Three expensive lots.
Yeah.
The other one is El Klaske Furniture Building, that's another going to be a fun discussion to have at some point, but...
I'm not pushing one way or the other.
Well, I think the endeavor that we have undertaken now, and we're just talking about the Wilson property, developing it and so forth, it's difficult to allocate...
Well, I think with all the endeavor that we have undertaken now, and we're just talking about the Wilson property, developing it and so forth, it's, it's difficult to allocate another four hundred thousand dollars to something right now for me.
Which we might not be, we really won't be, we'll just be sitting dormant for the next one, three, we'll be taking lots of looks, but, I mean, if we, if it's developed commercially, with the understanding that as the, I guess, the imminency of that, that road through there, again, perhaps I'm, I don't understand completely or entirely, but the, if that is the future road, that's, that's my understanding, then what commercial entity is looking at purchasing that at top dollar, knowing that they're going to be having a lifespan which is finite?
They're guaranteed a return.
For, well, I guess at one point, but not long.
Yeah, they're guaranteed that, you know, they'll get out of it if they want to or don't want to, they'll get their money back.
Do you feel like we should purchase this property now, Mr. Helms, at that rate?
I feel it's, it's a reasonable price and, yes.
I will tell you that, I won't mention any names, but I know there's at least one very popular, or not popular, recognizable name in the Roanoke area that their sole purpose in life is to find out where road projects are going and to buy property and play the condemnation game. So condemnation can be a very, and that would be the tool, the toolbox, if you have an unwilling seller at some point, and when you condemn on a property, the zeros start to add up on the property.
Are we mandated to go through there?
They're not going anywhere, they go through and take the bank out, or the credit union out.
Are we mandated to have it, cannot connect there, and then they go down through Patrick's Way, the forty feet?
You, you, something's got to give in there, and we have the, that bank would have, the, the bank property would go then.
Why, why does it have to...
Townhouses.
And actually, the...
You're saying why not make two right turns?
You talking about going through here?
I shouldn't, if, if we're really going to go down this path, we got to consider the, the old Kielaskey Furniture Building as well.
That's right.
Because if we're going to spend this amount of money for that road, not having that conversation which we had two or three months ago, which we all decided to pass on, to me, if we're going to support purchasing that property, and I appreciate Mr. Woody bringing it to us first, then we have, you almost have to buy that.
The other property.
But you just get to know what you're going to get in the property for, if you purchase this here, and you know that at that point, the other property is only going to go up in value, I would imagine, unless the negotiating point...
He priced it, another property also, I forget what he priced it at.
Walk away from that.
That's right.
My whole point is, if we're going to look at this, that goes along with it, you have to complete your package to get it up there.
I would agree, you have to, you have to know what one is and what the other is.
So, we're looking at two point four?
Are we looking right here, this is where the road is coming through here and then straight across, is that correct?
Yes.
So, we're not able to go there and just leave with half a million dollars on the table, we cannot do that.
That's not a very good alignment for...
Well, I agree, it's not a good alignment, but it's a...
If you're using traffic from one fourteen to North Franklin Street, I don't think you want to...
The other thing is...
Two ninety-degree turns in it.
To put, to put the connector in, you have to have a hundred-foot right away, don't you? And we probably don't have that for Patrick Way now.
No, you'd have to get some, some, some of that light to, to go, be tight, looking at four, possibly four lanes, but that's part of what the study's going to do.
I'd like for us to go back at the next meeting and look what we talked about on the other one and what it costs and stuff, and consider them together.
I think it's a good point.
I, I don't think you can do one without the other, because then it just, you know, just jacks up, and then they've got you over the barrel at that point.
Same person on both, that's the problem, is that's right.
Ash, hash.
Yeah, hash, that's right.
He did not want a commitment tonight, right, he, he has all the time to...
Yeah, I don't think he's expecting one tonight.
After the connector's route is built, you might have an extra lot for Patrick's Way as well.
Oh, yeah, I did mention that. If we took, if the connector road is built, say, straight out there, then we could take this piece right here, it's about a hundred and twenty by a hundred and thirty or forty foot, and have a lot right there that we could sell.
We'll talk about it more, but one idea there is, the utility and therefore the value of that property right now is somewhat limited because of the access problems that exist to Patrick's Way, you know, as we get into discussion there, if the town controlled that property now and put in a traffic signal, then that value would go up, it would skyrocket, that'd be the corner parcel there. It would go, the residual properties, it varies, say, in the Patrick's Way.
It would only be a three-way light though, it wouldn't be a...
It would be a three-way light, yeah, but you have the stop control there that, that we don't have in the same marketplace.
Actually, it'd be four-way, because that's...
Well, Trinity, that's just, that's their driveway, that way.
Oh, yes, that's right.
That's right, right, the private entrance, but anyway, I think, look at both properties together is a good idea.
So, I, I, and I don't mean to be so brash about it, but, again, I appreciate having the right of that, basically, give us up a first refusal at this point, but I, I know what we talked about up on the Cambridge side, which frankly, this amount pales in comparison to that. That's just, that's a huge investment, I, I, with, with the timeframe of, like Brad mentioned, I don't, I don't know when that timeframe is, and I don't know if anybody really knows when it is, but...
Well, the widening project was in the six-year plan for twenty-six years.
That's right, that's right.
So, who knows?
But you need both.
Yeah. Do you want to discuss this at our next meeting? Yeah, in, in discussion, please, please, just pull up the information we had previously on the other.
That's all, Henshaw.
I had something else I was going to mention, and I've asked Mr. Helms if he, I think you've already talked to Wayne on that left turn thing off of, out of McDonald's.
Yes.
I think we're going to, I've asked him, and I'll ask him to sign up the street committee to limit no left turns coming out of that McDonald's parking lot across over Franklin Street, I think that was one of the many things that one, that the VDOT study brought forth, is part of the cheapest thing on that whole study, and I'm not too sure with this, this other commercial piece goes in, we're just adding to the pot of, of problems, but anyway, I've asked him to go ahead and, and discuss with Wayne, and I think he's come back with an idea, or he will, so I'd like to run it by a street committee at your next meeting, and maybe we can take an action on it.
Absolutely.
I'd love to get it done.
Can I, can I ask a question, opposite of that, coming out of the rec center Food Line, and we're going to do the same thing, no left turns out of that, because that's right across from it, correct?
That, that entrance is being closed, is it not, Barry?
Well, the, the one down below is being closed, I think.
There's two, two of them being closed on that side, but one of them's at rec center, that's probably one we're talking about.
Or was...
And there's one of the others down there, it's going to be closed too.
On my way over here, I saw somebody trying to make that left turn out of McDonald's, it had the traffic back up, I come right back down to Patrick's Way, and somebody trying to make a left turn there and...
It's the same, it's the same type of issue, because that come up top of the crest.
So, anyway, we're going to let, I'm going to ask the street, the street committee to take a look at it and come back with recommendations, hopefully, to close it.
And not to, not to add on to that, Mr. Mayor, but can, can they look at the left out of Patrick's Way as well? That's the same type of scenario, it's, it's a blind coming over top, you're cresting the hill where the high school is coming down towards Trinity Baptist, that left-hand turn there is, they back up tremendously.
Mayor, you want to just have a, have a look at all of them?
But I agree with McDonald's, it's a dangerous turn now in Christiansburg, I guess.
Mr. Hubbard, did you have one more thing, quickly?
You know, on, was it Monday, is it the eighteenth, that at five o'clock, they're going to have that ceremony, and you know, the police force throughout the country has had such a terrible year this year, I would just make, I'm going to make a recommendation that we all try to go, and I think what would look good is the whole Christiansburg Town Council was there for this meeting, and, and, you know, for, for the policemen throughout the nation, and, and I'm going to try to be there, and I'll certainly help there.
To, to go on top of that, and I swore I'll get this out of here in the next minute, if I swear I will, Friday, the fifteenth, at the Loungery, they, they are sponsoring a, a reception for our, the local police officers to come by throughout the day to have snacks and cookies and, and stuff like that, and they've asked me to open, make an opening address at ten o'clock that morning, so if you're out and about during the day, our police officers are probably going to be in and out all day long, but if you're there around ten and wanted to stop in and say a word or two for them, we'd appreciate it, they'd appreciate it, but it is National Law Enforcement Day, and we did proclaim that to be so last week, at the last meeting. So, it's ten o'clock, I think it's ten to two-thirty-ish?
I think so.
Somewhere in that general area, so if you're out and about, it would, we'd, they'd appreciate seeing you there. Okay. I'd certainly entertain a motion.
Hello?
Second. Nobody's opposed, we're adjourned.